Good evening, and welcome to the City of Lebanon Plan Commission Meeting, Monday, November 18th. Not much of an agenda tonight, but we'll get started with call the immediate order and roll call. Kelly?
Matt Reynolds?
Here.
Ashley Paddock?
Here.
John Lastly?
Here.
Kevin Krulick?
Here.
Keith Campbell?
Here.
Gordon Perry?
Here.
Brian Tandy?
Here.
Jane Taylor?
Here.
And Lori Gross?
Here.
Great, everybody's here. All right, the next agenda item is the approval of last month's meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at them? Any comments or revisions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hope Stan, I wasn't here.
Okay. There's no old business tonight, the new business is the presentation for the updated comprehensive plan. This indicates it's a public meeting, so somewhere in here we will have public comment, according to the agenda.
We can do that. We will actually have a formal process next month that will include your recommendations. So you can do public comment this month if you want, or we could just do it next month when it will be back. We just wanted to introduce it to you this evening, get the website address out to you later this week, give you some time to look at it, and then we'll come back next month and do the formal resolution process.
Great, thanks Ben.
Very good. I'll give just a few introductory comments here, then I'll turn it over to Adam Peaper from Rundell Ernstberger to kind of walk you through the process, the structure of the product, and some of the goals and recommendations included within it. A little bit of background, this process started, it's going on about a year and a half ago now, really started in earnest about a year and a half ago. It's been a lot of work, it's put in a lot of hours, a lot of open houses, a lot of community meetings. I just wanted to start by thanking individuals that were involved. First of all, our steering committee included 15 members of the community, some from staff and also just other members of the community, and other members of other organizations. They worked very hard over the first about nine months to help us through that process, a lot of review time, so really thank the members who were on that steering committee. Also want to thank all the individuals that participated in the focus groups that we had, and then all the community members that attended the open houses, and also helped provide feedback by completing online surveys. It's very beneficial, the process, a very integral part of the process for us. Just a quick reminder, it's been a little bit since you guys have probably heard about the conference plan and what we're doing. It's a little bit of a unique product that's going to come out of this. It will actually, the conference of plan, the format is a website. We will not have a printed comprehensive plan. It will be a website, and what I don't mean is that it will be a printed product, it's PDF on a website. The comp plan will be itself a website. So something that we really want to have, that's really user-friendly for the members of the community, it's not a big academic document that most community members would not want to have to look through or spend time looking through, something where they can go to specific sections of that website, find the things that are most relevant to them, read them quickly and move on. But then also the benefit to us as the planning department and the staff is that something that can be updated regularly. So if one of those, we've met one of our goals, we can move on from that goal, take it off the website, add a new goal. Or if a goal changes, or a strategy changes, we can add that to the website, we can track our progress as well. So something where we really expect this, they've always mentioned that we want this to be a living document, not just something that sits on the shelf, but we don't have anything to put on the shelf. This is going to be a website that we can change on a regular basis, something that's going to be very accessible both to decision-makers in the community, but also the general community itself. Just real quickly, in terms of the approval schedule, as I mentioned, tonight we're just going to have a presentation from Adam. He's going to walk through the website for you, and we'll get that out to you this week. Expect you guys to spend some time on that website over the next month. If you have any general comments, specific or general, you can send them back to me before the next month's Plan Commission meeting, so if there's some things we can address prior to the meeting, we'll do that. But then we'll also hold the formalized process at next month's meeting. We'll go through the public hearing, allow any public comment if there are any, and then we'll ask for your recommendation on the revised conference of plan at the next meeting. From that point then, it goes to the council, and they'll actually be the body that adopts the resolution for the conference of plan, and then it will go into effect at that time. So we would expect, my guess is it'll be end of January, or either the first or second meeting in January of the council before we get it adopted, because I'd be shocked if they have the council meeting the week of Christmas this year or so. We'll be getting this adopted in January sometime, it'll become effective at that time. So with that, if there are any questions generally about the process that I could answer before I turn it over to Adam? Very good. This is Adam Peaper from Rundell Ernstberger. He was the lead planner on our project, and he'll be walking you through some of the website for you.
Good evening, thanks Ben. I see some familiar faces and some people who have been involved in the creation of this plan, so again to reiterate what Ben said, I'd like to thank them, and thank you all for your time this evening. I know you guys saw a light agenda and no official action, and thought you were going to have a nice easy meeting, and then I show up. So, this is informal, if you have any questions certainly feel free to interrupt and holler at me. Can we duplicate my screen, or do you see my screen?
There we go.
Okay.
I can't, can you?
I apologize. Okay. So as Ben said, this will not be a static printed or PDF document to exist in his office or on the planning department webpage. The conference plan itself is the website. So this is what the landing page looks like. I'm going to go through the organization here a little bit, and then touch on some of the key recommendations. I will also say, we're still working on some technical kinks right now, some coding issues that our subconsultant and the web developer is trying to iron out, and that's why Ben said we'll be getting the link out here shortly, later this week, and everything should be fully functioning at that point. But, just to introduce this, basically the, like most websites, the top heading bar here is going to be most of the navigation. Some of these initial buttons link to those sections. What is the plan goes to About the Plan, Plan Objectives leads to that key elements. The vision statement right here on the landing page, as well as then what are the six key plan frameworks. These are going to be the, this is the organizing structure for the majority of the conference of plan recommendations. So, as you can see, housing in neighborhoods, land use and development character, transportation utilities, downtown, quality of life, and economic development. So for each of these frameworks, land use and development character, for example, includes an overarching goal statement. So in this case, ensure a diverse and balanced mixture of land uses that contribute to the community character and an identity of Lebanon, preserve historic assets, support the city's fiscal health, and protect sensitive natural areas. Under each of the six frameworks, again, there's a goal statement, and then anywhere from 10 to maybe 20-plus objectives, the transportation utilities section has the most. So for each of these objectives, there is a progress icon. So as initiatives or objectives are completed, those can be checked off, and you can either leave them on the website to show progress, or like Ben said, remove them, replace them with others. The objective statements themselves go to support the goal and ultimately vision, but because they're fairly concise, each one is, can be expanded, and then includes a little extra description. So as you see, as you click on another one, that previous one collapses, and you can go through these. Also for each of the six frameworks, there's a supporting map. So in this case, land use and development character, this is what would typically be the future land use map, one of the very important components of the conference of plan. I'm assuming you all are familiar with the existing land use map, and that being referred to in staff reports, and as you all review rezoning petitions and things like that. Just to touch on this briefly, we have been maybe a little more reserved in outward growth, and particularly residential development, as compared to your current 2007 plan, tightening up some of those areas and not going out to the full extent of the township. We've also identified, as opposed to just single-family residential areas, a mixed-density residential use classification, to build in a little more flexibility and allow for some different housing products to meet affordability goals, and again accommodate a wider range of potential residents or age groups, so that they may remain in the community as their housing preferences may change. We've got some expansion of the industrial park identified here, as well as some other office and technical flex areas, specifically east of State Road 39, getting into not recognizing that expansion of the business park and the current large footprint warehouse uses, or other manufacturing uses, not continue east of 39, that that vision, or that area should be something a little different. So if we go back from there, again, I won't go through every plan element, the goal is really to introduce how this is organized, so you all can spend a little time with it. But just to show you again, so transportation utilities, long list of objectives here, and then the transportation map incorporating a number of other initiatives and planning studies that have already happened, or are currently ongoing, one being exploration of interchange alternatives for the Highway 52 interchange and potential relocation of that. So things like that have been incorporated in the transportation map. This is more focused on vehicular and roadway improvements, but we do have various bicycle and pedestrian objectives included as well.
What are those maps? Those aren't static PDF maps, what are, what's software, how are those updated in this format?
Yeah, so as they are loaded into the website, they're JPEGs, but we will be providing, Ben, the native files for those, should any amendments need to be made. Are you saying if someone wants to download it, or you need a larger?
Well, in keeping this current, where there's nothing paper?
Yeah.
Updating that, or revising it, or something like that, because we often see people that will, you know, they'll have some static map that was, you know, several years ago, and it's like, this is, you know, this is what it was, this is what it is, and it's like, no, it's changed over time. They haven't, we had that just last month, or in the last, somebody, you know, was challenging, well this, you know, this is what this was, you know, this was what the plan looked like in 2002, or 2007, or 2009, and it's like, you're using the wrong map.
Yeah, so I think what will be important is how changes to the website, I guess, are documented going forward, I think. Is that the kind of root of the?
Well, we, the city, I'm assuming, Ben, we, the city, are going to have whatever that map is, RTIS, or as an ESRI product, or whatever, we're going to have that to be able to make those changes. Plus, we're also going to be able to retain, retain versions. So you're going to have, here's revision, March 2020, September 2020, I mean, we can progress that, so if somebody has a question about that, we're going to be able to walk back and go, no, this is how it progressed forward.
Yeah, we'll have to create some backend structure for that, but certainly we will have the original files, the editable files for all these maps, so we can change those in-house. Probably won't be me, because I can't use any of that technology anymore, all that new stuff, but we will have an individual in our office that is able to make those changes as those changes happen, and then we'll have to just create some backend structure in order to be able to document, this was the March 2020 map.
So we won't be using?
August 2020, yeah.
We won't be using, that's not going to all be outsourced outside the city to keep?
No, that'll be all internal, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the plan elements and the six organizing frameworks, like I said, guide a lot of the recommendations. But as we progress through the process, and this is certainly not uncommon, we begin to see a lot of common themes or overlap between some of the different categories, obviously. Utility infrastructure is incredibly important with respect to economic development and land use and development form. So where these things start to stack up, we created this series of key initiatives. So the key initiatives are not specific to those six frameworks, there's 18 of them, and they, we have kind of keyed them back to those frameworks with these icons. So the little purple map is land use and development character, red is economic development, just for kind of reference sake. This is, unfortunately, this is a lot of the meat of the plan, and also some of the most graphic components, and this is what is not functioning properly right now. But where these buttons are that say view objectives, ultimately that's going to say more information, and you'll be able to click on that, maybe. And then that'll take you to a page specific to that key initiative. So again, here, promote infill redevelopment and repurposing of vacant and underutilized commercial and industrial sites throughout the city. Under each initiative, there is a summary description, kind of the how and why this is important, why it's included in the plan, what the ultimate goals of the initiative are, and expected outcome section, short-term action steps, long-term initiatives, and then what kind of staff, departments, boards, commissions, community nonprofits, and other organizations are going to be needed to realize that implementation. So just to touch on a few of these briefly, the creation of the vibrant mixed-use district along the west side of Interstate 65 between State Road 39 and Hallbreaker Road, that was that area I was kind of alluding to earlier, recognizing a different vision than the current Lebanon Business Park for that area, some kind of destination, commercial, recreation, entertainment uses there on the former Holiday Inn site, benefiting from that interstate visibility, and then as you would progress away from the interstate, getting to some of those office and flex spaces. Also opportunities for new residential development in this area, again, to capitalize, I mean, it's a large area, but again, can include a mixture of uses in a well-organized framework Another thing that was a common theme throughout the planning process was, obviously, all of your major corridors, and certainly gateway corridors for the most part, with the exception of Indianapolis Avenue, are currently state routes, right? So you're kind of hostage to NDOT a little bit there, but, so this, continue to assess and advocate for improved access into and around the city, including redesign and new And then also potentially looking at relinquishment of 39, should the new interchange be developed to the north, that could, 39 could then be realigned and meet with that interchange, use I-65 as a concurrent alignment to remove truck traffic from the downtown. Another one of our focuses was the established residential neighborhood of the city. So this assists with the creation of neighborhood groups and support residential infill rehabilitation and beautification efforts. So one of the things we worked on that will continue, or will take some continued refinement in, is in this neighborhood's map, was that if you live in a subdivision, it's pretty easy to identify or describe to your friends where that might be. As you live in older parts of the community that are on the grid, and where maybe some, you know, so-and-so's second addition to the city of Lebanon in 19-whatever, it's a little harder to find those. So we've created a framework, or preliminary framework, for neighborhood groups that could then be used to organize locally and create a kind of liaison program between these neighborhoods in the city to improve resident and city interaction. Things like this also serve to help establish and grow the next round of community leaders. And then this framework can be used for other improvements and targeted investment, specifically looking at what we've called Longley, Metzger Woods, and Creekside here, those areas potentially needing some targeted residential investment and a focus block strategy, where as opposed to, you know, kind of annually choosing which roads might see a mill and resurface, excuse me, which sidewalks may be replaced, what structures may be more proactively code enforced, or unfortunately demolished in some instances, focusing on two or three blocks, targeting your efforts there to really get those in shape. Again, provide additional incentives that may be utility or other connection fee reductions or abatements. And then, like I said, stabilize those neighborhoods, and then let the market take over and grow out from there, and then, you know, being able to move the focus to another few-block section in a few years. So that'll be described in more detail, or is described in more detail, under that initiative. Other things we talked about were a public art program. Again, obviously you've made tremendous investments in the downtown, so being proactive about identifying appropriate locations for potential public art, and creating guidelines, or an organization that would then be the organizing body for that. Some of these things, we're trying to identify other organizations or community groups that can take the lead on some of these efforts, so not everything falls back to planning department, city council, or you all. Some other recommendations, updating the unified development ordinance to reflect the goals and recommendations of this plan. It's always a recommendation after a comprehensive planning process, is to revisit your UDO to make sure that you have the correct districts in place, or that your districts include standards that are supportive of the broader goals of the conference of plan, also making sure you don't have any roadblocks in there to things that the plan is trying to promote or incentivize. For example, we talk about housing and increasing residential dwellings in the downtown, better utilizing upper floors, creating a more round-the-clock presence and activity downtown. Again, that residential base is always there to support restaurants or businesses. But one of the things we see is that even in a downtown area, and while your, the downtown district currently permits residential uses on upper floors, there are still parking requirements for them, and functionally on a lot of those sites, that means it's just not possible, or you're certainly going to have to be going to the BZA to seek a variance. So using this UDO kind of audit process after the comp plan to alleviate some of those And then finally, this last one that I'll touch on, implement a public relations and code enforcement campaign to address recurrent property and maintenance issues throughout the city. That's something we heard a lot in focus group meetings, steering committee meetings, and at our public, other public engagement efforts. I know code enforcement can be incredibly labor and resource intensive, so we don't recommend that lightly, but understanding, obviously, that proper building and site maintenance goes a long way to contributing to overall community character and quality of life. And then the other thing, I believe we've touched on under this, is growing the Love and Lebanon Campaign, and using that to better promote good news. And that oftentimes the negative perceptions and attitudes about the community are actually coming from residents of the community, and that sometimes they're their own worst enemy. So whether it is a, you know, front yard or garden of the month club, any good news using, really trying to get that out frequently to start to combat some of the negative attitudes that we heard, again, mostly from residents throughout the process. Just quickly, I'll touch on the implementation section, so this starts to get into what to do after the plan is adopted. So the early action items, annual review of this plan, like Ben said, it's designed to be updated and used on a daily basis, not be the static PDF that 10 years later you'll say, we need to redo this. And then, again, some of the key points being creating a capital improvements program, and things like that. The maps and documents page, again, it houses all of those framework maps, as well as some of the other resources that were created throughout the process. We did a number of online survey questions, we rolled out a couple of questions each week to kind of keep that activity going, and we used a Facebook ad to drive content to that. We were actually getting responses upwards of 500 responses for a lot of those questions, which we thought was pretty incredible. We also have some of our steering committee and other open house presentations on here. I'll just say quickly, down at the bottom, there's an opportunity to sign up, to get on the planning department email list, as well as links back to city website, planning page specifically, and contact information. The site is also mobile optimized, I don't think a lot of people are probably going to be viewing it on their phone, but maybe like tablet or iPad or something like that. So that's it for my quick spiel, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll also say, I'll leave you my contact information. As you have some time to look at this, I would, you know, certainly feel free to send me an email. If you want to call me on the phone and talk through it, I'm happy to do that, we can set up an appointment, or you can just give me a ring. Also, if you would like to sit down over coffee, or in Ben's office or something, I'm happy to make myself available, again, to answer any questions, iron out any additional details or potential concerns you may have, before we would come back next month and hopefully seek a favorable recommendation to the council.
Ben, I got a quick question.
Sure.
If I hear you guys correctly, in the sense, you guys in-house are going to be making these changes on this on a, like a monthly basis, or as needed, or?
I think it's, we're probably, what I think we'll likely do is create some sort of committee that at least meets maybe every six months, or once a year, will figure out the best schedule. So we have somewhat of a structure for more significant updates, and have a committee to kind of bounce those off of to some extent. That doesn't mean that we can't make changes as, if there's a significant enough change, and we want to change it right now, we can change it right now, especially if a map changes or something like that. So we can certainly do those on the fly, but I would anticipate we're going to have some structure to that review process and that change process as well, so we know at least once a year, if not maybe twice a year, we're doing a more comprehensive review and making changes like that. So it may be a subset of the planning commission and council, and some of our steering committee members, I haven't really thought through exactly how that's going to work yet, but I would say it's probably no more than five people that have say it's probably no more than five people that have some time to be able to dedicate to that. I'm not suggesting it's going to take a lot of time to do, but just to make sure we have some structure to that.
I guess my concern, or, you know, maybe I'm not thinking correctly on it, but my concern would be a taxpayer would look at it on a, on a Monday and then something ends up changing two weeks later and they go back to, to say, well, you know, this was that way then, now I've got to change it, you know? How do we keep that refreshed or how do we keep that constantly updated so that doesn't happen?
I don't know that this is going to change that frequently. I think it's, it's going to be a major occurrence before we're making any significant changes here, other than maybe updating as we're accomplishing things. So I don't think there's going to be something that a community member sees, like the land use map, one week and then the next week, all of a sudden, rather than saying residential, it says commercial. I don't see anything major like that happening. And then keep in mind, this is a guiding document, there's no, there's nothing legal behind this, so even if it does change, it doesn't really affect anybody that. So if a person's property goes residential, commercial, that doesn't mean they can't live there anymore. It's going to change what they do to that property. This is a guiding document to guide the Plan Commission and Council to make decisions. So I don't, but I don't see anything major, significant changes like that. I don't see happening that often. I think that'll be more of a structural change that happens maybe once or twice a year at the most.
Okay.
And Ben, can I ask, and may seem like a silly question, being that we're, you know, a half hour into this meeting, but what is being asked of us as far as review? I know we're going to review the site, maybe for functionality, but are you asking us to review the content and should these bullet points be part of the plan? Are these the objectives that we should be looking at? I mean, what are you wanting?
You know, if, if there's something that you, that you read as you're going through and you're saying, gosh, that is totally off-base, I can't believe they put that in there?
Okay.
I would say, let us know. I'd be shocked if you find that, because most of this is based off of community input. So I don't think we're way off-base with anything and there's nothing terribly controversial in here anyway. So I don't think you're going to run into too many of those, but if there's certainly something where you're like, I'm not sure that that's exactly what that should say, or if there's some, some minor things like that, we can certainly make any adjustments there. I would ask you to look through as much of it, as much of it as you're comfortable with and let us know if you see anything you're like, I'm not sure that that's exactly what they meant by that, or ask if that's what we meant by that. You know, if you, if you see that there's a minor typo, you know, it's, I'm not asking you to review our grammar, but if there's any major components or major issues that are mentioned in there, you're like, I'm just not sure that's quite right, certainly let us know those things.
Okay.
Yeah, and also, if you run into any technical issues with usability of the website, we definitely need to know those.
Okay, thank you.
Comprehensive plan, Ben, you're saying it's a compilation of guidelines based on community input and stuff. There's nothing hard and fast that says, this is, you know, this is the path we're on, you know, come hell or high water, we're going to, we're going to stick to this, or we varied from that and now we're, now we have somebody that's, you know, hugely upset because we looked at something that was zoned, single-family, and for whatever reason, it turned out later on that it was better zoned, something else, like industrial, for lack of a better term or something.
Yeah.
There's, there's not a, there's not a legal recourse that comes back and goes, I mean, through, through the, through the BZA, the Plan Commission and the Council, there are steps to make those types of changes.
Right.
To this plan. And what you're saying is, is that we would update the plan according to those changes that are made by the different boards and different entities of the city.
Certainly, if, you know, a, there's a rezon petition that's not supported by the, and again, maybe I'll take a step back. Yes, this is a guiding document. It ends, it, what it's intended to do is, this is our vision for community, this is the direction we want to go. And here are the steps we'd like to take to try to reach that vision. But it's not a legal document, so there's not, the land use map, if it says residential, that doesn't mean it has to be residential. There's nothing legal about that saying it's residential, it's a guide. But if somebody comes with a rezon and says that we think this makes more sense as industrial, we all look at it, the Plan Commission, even if the Plan Commission, it ultimately gets to the Council, the Council could say, yeah, we think this makes more sense as industrial, we're going to make that rezon change. At that point, I would want to go back and change the land use map to reflect the decision they made, but they don't have to make a decision based on what the land use map says in the comprehensive plan, it's a guide.
So as an example, all of the, all the land that runs down toward 267 was all zoned, I believe it was all zoned, single-family.
Right.
And we're seeing a lot of industrial or commercial use for that, which has to come to the BZA to get that done and so we're looking at those types of things.
Yes, and you'll actually see on the future land use map, part of that actually has already been changed in the future land use map to industrial and some other uses, primarily down closer to the southern end of the community. We, Adam mentioned, we didn't, we didn't look at the entirety of center township for a future land use, we kept some of it kind of in the, in the, the base agricultural or undeveloped land, future land use. We do expect that that will change over time. What we really looked at is, is if this is a 10-year plan, what could we, what could we see in our foreseeable future in 10 years? What do you expect, what do we expect might develop in the next 10 years? And so we based that future land use map on kind of that time horizon, but that's not to say that something comes in and say, you know, in four years from now, it says, yeah, I know that says agricultural, but the market is telling me that needs to be this. And that could change, that could change that course too. So we're, we're basing it on, you know, our educated guess on, you know, forecasting what might develop over the next 10 years, but it could end up being totally different than that. If I knew what would develop, I probably would be doing something different right now.
In the utility section, you know, they had talked about looking at streets or areas that, you know, target them and help with scheduling and that. Is this document going to, well, it's part of the comprehensive plan, so it probably won't, but where we've made improvements, like on Meridian Street and East Street and others, where we've made those major utility improvements and that, where does that get tracked?
I don't know that it necessarily spells out specifically where we have made improvements. There's certainly something we can look at putting in there. What I think really that does for me is say, if we've redone East Street in this area, we've made these improvements, what additional steps can we do to help facilitate investment on private property if it's not happening yet? Is it the fact that there are just some homes that are in significant disrepair that need to go away to facilitate some redevelopment? Is there things that the city can do to help that happen? So that's, that's how I might use this and then some of the efforts that are coming out of Kevin's office to see what the next steps might be. But also, we can take a step back from that and identify specific areas, say, look, with some work, we think this could be a great reinvestment opportunity. What steps can the city say, take to start those wheels turning if it's redoing the streets, like Adam said, or maybe we go in and do some targeted property acquisition and take some homes down to start that process? Those are things we want to try to do in some targeted areas where some reinvestment might be beneficial.
Thank you. Other questions for Ben or Adam? We're not going to make this a public hearing, so I'm not opening it up.
We'll do that, we'll do that next month.
Yeah.
And what we'll do is we'll get the website out to you as soon as it's ready, we'll send that to you directly. We'll also post it on the city's Facebook page, for those in the community that also want to see that before the next month, we'll, we'll make sure that that gets posted and advertised so folks can get a look at it. Hopefully, we'll have some folks here next month interested in participating in the discussion about the updated comp plan. And I will reemphasize, I know it's not a sexy key initiative, but one of the big things for me is going to be relook, an audit of the Unified Development Ordinance, that is the legal document. So while the comp plan's that guy, then the UDO is the legal document. So if there are major changes that we need to make to that, whether it's to the zoning map, because there's areas that maybe historically have been industrial, but they're in decline and it's an area that should be and maybe could be considered for residential development, if it makes sense to change that zoning now to make those industrial uses that are still there the non-conforming use, those are things we should consider, because that will help facilitate those changes as well. So that's something that, again, while it's not the sexy initiative, that's something that's very critical to what we do in the planning office, to make sure that that legal document reflects this document, it helps us moving forward quite a bit. So that's something that will be on the radar going into next year.
All just waiting for the website, Ben.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Any other business? Didn't see any, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I saw a motion.
I second.
Who's in favor?
I.
All right. This concludes the November 18th meeting. We will meet again on December 16th, 2019. Thank you all, have a good evening.